All right, I'm gonna call the City of Prescott Council meeting to order. It is November twenty-fourth at six P M. Roll call, Mike.
Here.
Maureen.
Here.
Ben.
Here.
Lindsey is present. The mayor, Adam and Dar are excused. Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, the council will receive public comments. The city council will receive public comments on any issues related to the agenda items. Limited discussion by the council may take place. Hearing none. Um, next we will do the consent agenda. So we have the Health and Safety Committee minutes from November tenth. The City Council minutes from November tenth. The Fire and EMS Commission minutes from November twelfth. The Parks and Public Works Committee minutes from November seventeenth. We have special event permit for Winterfest on January tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, from three P M to six P M. And closure for Orange Street. And then the approval of a bench dedication from Dan Geister to the Freedom Park.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
And I'll second that.
Um, motion and a second, any comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, reports of standing committees and commissions. Finance Committee, nothing. Planning Commission, the next meeting is Monday, December first, at six P M. Parks and Public Works, the next meeting is December fifteenth, at five P M. On November seventeenth, we discussed a couple of properties on Sunset Court and then ten-ten Pearl Street. Um, a citizen wanting to talk about some things happening with stormwater runoff. And then we also talked about the approval of the bench dedication that we just approved. And then Health and Safety, the next meeting is Monday, January twelfth, at five P M. Personnel Meeting, the next meeting is Monday, February fourth, at five P M. Um, Commissions and New Business, public comments. The City Council will receive public comments on any issue not related to agenda items. Limited discussion by the City Council may take place. However, no action will be taken on any items. This includes receiving written requests or documentation on any possible future action. Hearing none. Review of two thousand and twenty-four audit report by Johnson Block CPAs.
She can't hear just in time.
Yep.
So, um, Marissa Powers is here with us from Johnson Block. And they're the company that we hired, have hired to do our annual audit findings, audit each year. Um, this year we did also have a single, a single audit done as a result of us receiving, um, in excess of seven hundred fifty thousand from the federal government. So that's one of the requirements as well. So I'll turn it over to Marissa.
I mean, you could just give the presentation now. Yes, as I said, my name is Marissa Powers, um, with Johnson Block and Company. Um, I've been auditing the City of Prescott now, I guess, I think for ten years, I think I've been around now. It's been ten years. Um, so I believe, um, you council members should have, were they given the audit report and all that stuff? Okay, so we should have provided you, I think, four documents in this year. So this, the first one is this presentation that I'm gonna go through. The next one is the audit report financial statements, then the required communication document. And as Matt said, then the single audit report or your report on, um, federal compliance. Um, so I'm just gonna, this is just an overview of what is contained in all those reports. And the audit report, that's the big report, that's like a ninety-page report, I think. Um, so we did, first part of it is our independent audit reports. We did issue an unmodified opinion, the opinion you want, it's a good, clean opinion, meaning your financial statements are free for materialless statement. And then it's the M D and A, Management Discussion Analysis. Highly recommend that as, like, council members or if any, like, city member or, um, citizens ever want anything, those, like, I think it's like seven pages long. That's really good information on the city and it's kind of more, like, understandable than, like, the full audit report. Because that can get really wordy and you don't understand what it's telling you unless you're kind of in finance. Um, but the M D and A is a really good thing to review and look at. Um, and the government-wide financial statements, um, it's just a full accrual accounting, basis of accounting and it's the full city altogether. Um, and then we have the fund financial statements. Um, so this just, um, has each individual fund. So we have the governmental funds and the business-type funds. Um, your governmental funds, you have major, major, non-major. Your major funds this year were general fund to four and five and capital improvements fund. And then you have several non-major funds, which I think are all listed in a couple of pages in the presentation. And then your business-type activities, they're ran like a business, so it's your water sewer and stormwater funds, your, your utilities. Um, and the major differences in accounting between the two funds. So governmental funds are modified accrual, so they don't have debt on their books, it just proceeds in expenditures. And same thing with, they don't have capital assets on their books, it's expenditures rather than long-term assets that are depreciated. Um, the notes of financial statements, this is the longest part of the audit report. Um, it backs up every number that's on the face of the financial statements. Um, but again, they can get really wordy and kind of confusing, but if you ever want any more detail, that's where you would go. Um, then you have the required supplementary, supplementary information and the supplementary information. Um, so the R S I is budget and actual, Wisconsin retirement system schedules, which come directly from the states. And then the combining non-major fund statements. Um, the next document is the required audit communications to the City Council. That's just a letter, um, as us as your auditors to you as a council. Um, and it's a lot of the stuff that we're required to communicate to you for, by our audit standards. Um, gets pretty wordy. As, if you're gonna look at anything, I would look at the audit report over that. Um, and it has management letter comments in it. And I believe management letter comments are, they're not findings, they're just kind of more like F Y Is or recommendations. And we did have one this year that we've had forever, and it's basically just that we have to acknowledge that you guys are a smaller city and they don't, you don't have enough accounting staff to properly segregate all accounting functions. It's just kind of something we have to put in there and acknowledge that you only have three, I think, accounting people, not twenty, so.
Is, is that why there are results in so many journal entries then?
It could be, and I know, like, the journal entries this year, there are quite a few. There was a lot of odd things this year. Like, I know the P S C rate case that counted for some of the journal entries, because P S C wanted to see things shown differently. Um, and those are, I think, on the, the six hundred journal entries. Um, and then some of, like, I know you guys did, like, a debt reallocation where you wanted to show the debt differently for the capital proceeds. And then we had to, like, change that and how it was originally recorded was different. Um, and there's also a new accounting standard this year for G A S B one-on-one, which I'll talk about in a little bit, that was for compensated absences. That kind of changed how we recorded things. Um, but yes, it could be that things aren't being caught, like, as quickly, maybe. Um, but a lot of the journal entries, yeah, are kind of more higher level, I guess I'd probably say, they're a little. Use a city, you, you guys do have a lot going on. There's a lot of accounting that goes with that. Um, and I would say that the day-to-day, like, journal entries, those, like, aren't a problem at all. But yeah, it's like the higher conceptual, which we come in and we, we do for a lot of, like, um, cities and stuff like that, so.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of things we expect, we expect to, like, adjust depreciation for your plant and utility. Like, I know, um, Beth does try to track, um, the plant for water sewer and stormwater. We come in and we usually kind of blow up what she did and be like, no, we don't like that, and we change all of her entries. Um, so that, that happens quite a bit. And I know, like, this year with the well project, there was a lot of entries, a lot of adjustments that we made with that and moving, um, how we wanted to show the revenues and expenses around with the Safe Drinking Water Loan and the other grants.
Hmm.
So there was, there was a lot going on this year that we had to account for and, like, um, a lot of discussions of how we wanted to show it.
I see.
Especially with the P S C rate case, that, that one, because I, I don't know if you guys know, but P S C went back, gosh, was it to, like, two thousand and three?
Two thousand and two, I believe.
Yes, and had us change things of how they wanted to show things. And so there's entries in there that are from numbers that are essentially from, like, two thousand and two. So, yeah. So it was a very, you guys had a lot going on this year. And it was a, it was a, I would admit, it was a big audit to get through this year. There was a lot going on, especially with the single audit them too. Um, but yes, regarding those journal entries though, they're all in that last couple pages of that, um, required communication document to you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but in regarding that, so I guess, because of those entries, because there were so many and they were so big. Mostly for plant, I think was a major one. And then, um, um, the debt reallocation, because they were such large dollar amounts that we were moving and, like, relocating how we wanted to show, we had to show, like, per, per our standards. Um, we did have, yeah, a material weakness for material audit adjustments, which is in that single audit report this year. And then we did have one other, um, finding, which is that federal compliance finding, finding for the federal procedure manual, which you guys already approved. One, right? Yeah, so that finding will go away. Um, we just had to note that you didn't have one before you got the grant funds.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but otherwise, yeah, we issued an unmodified opinion on that, the single audit report too. And I think it's, like, the first time you guys have had a single audit report or, or a single audit in at least the ten years I've been here. So, um, yeah, you guys got a lot of federal money this year. Um, and yet, in that single audit report is the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. Actually, I don't think there's, there wasn't state awards that we had to report this year, it was just federal. Um, now we're just gonna get to your financial statement highlights. So these are just directly from the face of the financial statements. Um, this is just your general fund. Um, your total assets, approximately five point eight million, which is very comparable with two thousand and twenty-three. Um, total liabilities, two point seven million, again comparable, and total fund balance of three point one million. Um, again, we're still in the general fund, so this is just a detailed, the general fund fund balance. Um, I'll talk more of this on the next page, but three categories we identified are non-spendable, assigned and unassigned fund balance. Um, and then the summarized income statement, um, budget to actual. Again, these are just the total lines of revenues, expenditures and other financing sources and uses. Um, but you budgeted for deficit, uh, to use some reserves of fifty thousand and you had an actual net increase in fund balance of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Um, so this is the breakdown of that general fund fund balance. So in non-spendable, you had advances to other funds and prepaid's of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand. And then, uh, assigned fund balance is the vacation and sick leave of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Um, again, this number, I think, changed a little bit this year, um, because we did have to implement a new standard called G A S B one-on-one, compensated absences, which was kind of a large standard implemented and overhauled how we record compensated absences when we're required to record them. Um, I don't, we did not have to do a prior period adjustment related to that. Um, but just so you're aware, we did implement a new standard and there's a whole footnote on that in the audit report. Um, and then unassigned fund balance of two point six million. Sorry, that one's kind of small. Um, so these are your fund balances for all your other funds. Um, these are all your non-major funds. As you can see, there's quite a few of them. Um, these are just the ending fund balances for them. So your special revenue funds, which is like your public water impact fees, your library fund, your food, food shelf fund. Um, your, so your total special revenue fund balances, ending balance was, uh, six hundred and eighty-four thousand. And then your capital project funds, which includes your T I F S, capital improvement fund and capital projects fund. Ending fund balance is two point one million and then debt service, ending fund balance of three hundred and five thousand. And then now we're getting into the utility operations or your business type or your proprietary funds, they're all the same thing. Um, so you have water sewer and stormwater. So water had, uh, operating loss, which we, the tax equivalent in there, of one hundred and thirty-four thousand. Sewer had operating income of seventy-five thousand and stormwater had operating income of nine thousand. Uh, this is utility cash flows, just the summary of each, um, section of them. Again, these are all taken directly from the face of the financial statements. Um, water used, used cash of a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, sewer used cash of five hundred and thirty-one thousand. And stormwater, um, had net cash flows of one hundred and forty-six dollars. Um, and you, you can see in water and sewer that net cash flows used for capital-related financing. Those decreased, I guess, a lot this year. And that was mostly related to how we had to show the, um, debt reallocation between the funds. Um, this is a trend analysis for the last three years for your utility operating income or loss. Um, as you can see, waters had a loss for the last two years, that the water's on the far left and that sewer and stormwater. Um, so sewer and stormwater, yes, did have income this year, but their income is declining. Um, I'm hoping that your water operating will be better this year with the sewer or the water rates increase. Um, this one doesn't have a title on it, but this is your general fund and your debt service fund expenditures for the last five years. Um, everything's pretty comparable besides that red one, where's that, that's the big spike and that's the debt service. Um, and that's just due to last year in the general fund, you paid off your two thousand and twelve G O bonds, your G O refunding bonds. And then the other, there's another one, a blue one, that kind of drops off. And that's your public works and that's because you stopped, um, facilitating garbage and recycling this year, so you don't have those expenses. Um, this is a breakdown of those same expenditures, just showing in a little pie, pie chart. Um, um, they're usually pretty comparable, but this year the pie chart, they look a little different. And I think it's mostly because that debt service last year made a large difference. And I'm, um, looking at the prior year, I looked at two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-four were pretty comparable for, like, the breakout of how you spend things. Um, but public safety, uh, was your number one at almost fifty percent. And then your general government, debt service, public works, and then, um, all the other categories. Um, now we're getting into general fund revenues, um, for the last five years. Um, these are all pretty comparable and have pretty normal fluctuations. Um, that purple one that drops off there, kind of third one from the top. Um, that's also pub, your, um, related to garbage and recycling as charges for services, because you stopped facilitating that, so you're not getting that revenue. Um, on this next page, this is a breakout of your general fund revenues. Um, as you can see, these pies are pretty similar to each other. Um, your taxes accounted for fifty-three percent, which is comparable to last year, your largest chunk of your revenues. And then it's intergovernmental or your grants that you receive. And the miscellaneous and, um, regulation compliance and public charges for services. Again, these are very comparable to each other. Uh, this is just your G O debt limit to capacity. So you did have a G O debt limit in two thousand and twenty-four of thirty-three point four million. You had outstanding G O debt of just over ten million, which means you had capacity of twenty-three point four million or almost seventy percent available for debt. Um, and then you did have a growth in your equalized value this year, approximately five point two seven percent. Um, this is your property taxes analysis for the last three years. Um, so T I F three, obviously zero, because it's been closed, but the city T I F four and T I F five. Um, the city is that tall green one, it's been pretty comparable and consistent for the last three years. Um, you are increasing your, this year you did increase the levy limit for T I F four and you did decrease it for T I F five. Oh, it's really small. Um, and this is your property tax rule breakout, your two thousand and twenty-four levy collected in two thousand and twenty-five. Um, the city's kind of looking at that, that pink one, kind of towards the top. Um, the city gets twenty-four percent of the tax levy. Um, T I F districts, the blue one right below it is ten percent. Um, and then the big blue one on the side is the local school district, it's forty-one percent. The county gets nineteen and technical colleges get four. And then all the other categories are less than three percent of the tax levy. Um, this page is taken directly from that government-wide financial statements, the first, um, type of financial statements you'll see when you open the audit report. Um, so this is just, what this just shows is, um, the net expense, um, by program or by function, I guess. Um, so your general government, public safety, public works, um, like the net costs. Um, so you have a deficit of three point nine million, um, which means that that three point nine million is all funded by general revenues, your property taxes, your intergovernmental grants, things that aren't specifically attributed to those categories. So, yes, you had a net cost of three point nine million and then general revenues of five million. And that is the last page of my presentation. Does anyone have any other questions? Or any questions on, like, the single audit report or anything, since that was new this year? We did, I guess I should say, we, as Matt said, we did audit two programs. We had to audit the Safe Drinking Water Loan and the Emerging Contaminants Grant, the federal grant that you guys have received. Um, and we did find no compliance findings within those, either of those programs. It was just the one finding overall for not having the federal procedure manual approved, but. Other than that, for not having a single audit, that's, that's good to not have any findings in programs. Because usually when you have a municipality that's never had a single audit, you usually will have program findings, but we did not this year.
Oh. Good to know.
Yeah.
Other questions?
I'm good, Lindsey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have Resolution sixty-two twenty-five, establishing procedures for the issuance of two open Class B liquor licenses. Matt?
Thank you, Lindsey. Um, sorry, let me scroll down to the back, I was in the audit there.
Yes.
Um, so we've been working with the Health and Safety Committee and Rochelle's been doing a lot of work on this. Um, basically, right now we have two open Class B liquor licenses. One is a regular Class B liquor license, so basically this means it was issued before nineteen ninety-seven, December first of nineteen ninety-seven. And we, as a city, can only charge five hundred dollars for that license. And then we have one reserved Class B liquor license, which is a result of population growth within the community. And we are required by state statute to charge a minimum of ten thousand dollars for that license. So we have ten currently issued and those are within your packet. But, uh, we have decided to move forward with basically issuing the two outstanding. And we've come up with, um, an application, the liquor license application itself, along with a set of application scoring criteria and evaluation guidelines. Um, so what we're requiring is, um, people to submit their server and operator license trainings and then a business plan if it's a new business. Um, and then we'll score based on those, those findings. Um, right now, the proposed letter, and we'd be putting for a class one notice within the paper, that we give them till January thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-six to submit their application for us to review. And then we'll be setting a special meeting of the Health and Safety Committee for February to review those and score them and then bring them to council for findings. Um, so with that, we'll turn it over to council for comments or questions. There is one question we had for council to get your feedback is, um, at one point we discussed possibly sending these out to all commercial districts within, as a notice, um, as we were looking over, like, C two districts. Um, we were just wondering if that's really what you'd like us to do, because as we went down the list, you know, there's, there's banks, there's storage units. Obviously, those probably are not going to be interested. So just using our discretion, if you're fine with that, otherwise, just to make sure that there's no people complain that say that they didn't get noticed. We could just send them to everybody, so we just wanted your feedback on that.
Um, I don't know. I think it's kind of a wasted time for you guys to just send it to everybody, don't you think?
Oh, yeah.
I would, I would say it's more to you guys, what you feel with this.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, you guys got enough to do already.
If it's common sense.
In the newspaper as well, so.
Yeah, I would think.
Yeah.
That would do it.
This looks good, I'm excited.
We, we talked in the committee about whether to try to find, uh, a group outside of the city council who could.
Score?
Look at the results of the grading. Um, but then we came to the conclusion that it was better handled by the council, because we are responsible to make the decision. So that's why we went back and forth for a little bit about that.
So are you saying that the council was scoring too or just the health and safety people?
I think it's listed as the health and safety people right now, but.
That's, that's fine.
Anybody can come to the meeting. So you want to score?
Sure.
That's fine.
We did with our, the other project. So, do you?
A motion to approve Resolution sixty-two twenty-five, establishing procedures for the issuance of two open Class B liquor licenses.
Second.
A motion and a second, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up, I have approval of short-term rental license application and permitting procedure for two thousand and twenty-six for city code six thirty-five forty-six. Matt?
Thank you, Lindsey. Um, so we've had in place our liquor, or sorry, still on the last one. Our short-term rental license application requirement six thirty-five dash forty-six, since we updated our zoning code in two thousand and twenty-three. Um, we have been delaying its implementation, um, mainly due to the fact that we haven't really had compliance issues and we haven't had a set, um, license up to this point yet. So two thousand and twenty-four did not, um, have the procedures as of yet. But, uh, recently we have had a couple that have, uh, started within the community and we haven't had very much success in getting them to turn in their room tax, uh, forms and things like that. So having the license plus it helps us keep track and, and better, um, evaluate what is all in the city and what's occurring, where they are, how often they're occurring. So, um, Rochelle was nice enough to put this license application together. We brought to Health and Safety Committee, it was approved. Um, so basically for two thousand and twenty-six, we'd be sending this application with the permit. This is a no-fee permit. a no-fee permit, um, that we'd be using just to keep track of them, and make sure they're staying up to date on paperwork. So, um, that is before you tonight, with a copy of the requirements as well within our city code. So that I'll turn it over to council for comments and questions.
How many do you think we have in the city?
How many?
Like, short-term rentals?
What's considered as short-term?
Less than 30 days.
Less than 30 days.
Less than 30 days, okay. Well, I know I got one on my street.
That's one.
[laughing]
You know, I want to say it's between six and eight, but Beth would be the one who would know for sure, as she sends out the room tax collections right now.
I would say it's about between six and 10.
So would there be somebody going around to check up on these people's houses?
Probably, yeah.
Yes.
Is that the idea, too?
What was that, Mike?
Is that, we have somebody that's going to check on this stuff? Is that part of the idea, is that we want to be able to know that everything is in compliance? So they would.
Yeah, so they send in their paperwork.
Or we're just going to have paperwork and nobody actually look?
Well, we can't go into the, into the short-term rentals, it's just to verify what's happening in the community, and how often they're occurring, and where they're at, and making sure that if we have issues where people aren't registering as short-term rentals, then we have the tools necessary to kind of enforce that we're keeping track of that.
Knowing who the landlords are is helpful if there's a complaint.
Right, we need that, and then there, one of the requirements is an actual sign-in log, so when people stay there, they sign in. So we'd have track, be able to keep track of that as well, as part of the licenser.
Okay.
Motion to approve the application for.
Yeah.
Short-term rental applications and permitting procedure for 2026.
Second it.
A motion and a second, any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passed. Uh, notice of 2026 spring elections.
So this is, this is just more of a notice, um, on December 1st, 2025, uh, people interested in nomination papers for upcoming elections to our local, um, but, local, um, seats, uh, opens up, and that goes through January 6th of 2026, uh, closes at 4:30. Um, we have three seats in April that are up for election, uh, that is the mayor, uh, currently Mayor Doherty, Ward 3 Alderman, Alderperson Hints, and then Ward 4 Alderperson Sorenson, um, are all up for election. So you can find, uh, the notice on our website, as well as, uh, GAS, so you can find what ward you live in, and what wards are throughout the community.
Thank you. Next, I have the approval to the Tourism Committee of Elizabeth Vetter.
So last meeting, we had the nomination, and so now bringing that forward for approval. Uh, Ms. Vetter owns a downtown business, and, um, she has been attending Tourism Committee meetings, so the Tourism Committee has put forth Ms. Vetter for, uh, approval, as we've had a vacancy open up with Todd London vacating his seat, so.
Motion to approve Elizabeth Vetter for the Tourism Committee.
Second it.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, I have the consideration of the cancellation of the regular city council meeting for Monday, December 22nd. Matt?
So the last, I think, three or four years, basically, we've been canceling the second meeting in December as, due to the holidays, and just, we've not had as many things come up in December, so it's looking that way again, so we, we just need approval from the council to move forward with cancellation of that meeting, so.
Motion to approve the, um, cancellation of the December 22nd, uh, regular city council meeting.
Second.
A motion and a second, any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Other business? A reminder of the intergovernmental meeting for the Prescott Area Fire and EMS Association on Wednesday, January 14th, at 7:00 PM. Any other business? Closed session, so closed session per Wisconsin State Statute 1985, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Discussion and consideration of agreement with. GON companies.
Motion to go into closed session.
Second it.
A roll call, Mike?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Aye.
We're closed.
Can I ask you my two questions now?